On the future board of this way. I'll talk about later Pendott as a project where you're supposed to enhance this intersection, including new pedestrian facilities. You have a huge residential development and you have what I would consider potential pedestrian attractors, the church, the school, the stores, that it's highly likely that if this were to be built, that there would be people walking, jogging. And the pedestrian, excuse me, facilities proposed as part of this are somewhat lacking. So there should be additional access for non-vehicular modes. So again, these are the sort of comments that would be provided to the planning commission if the planning commission so recommends they could use these as conditions as this moves forward. I expect this may also come up as part of the conditional use testimony before the Board of Supervisors. So circulation within the site. Some of the things that are being considered addressed in some of the reviews is we do have the Collector Road. Okay. We do have the Collector Road going just to the west of the church, coming down to opposite of Bridlewood. That provides what we've been looking for for circulation. I would say that one thing that would need to be considered, how many people live in subdivisions? How many people complain about traffic within the subdivisions? So preemptively, it may be a good idea to try to get them to do some traffic calming along the Collector Road because we want it to serve more traffic than the other local roads, but we don't want it to be disruptive to the community. So some higher level traffic calming that still allows the flow of traffic, that prevents excessive speeds would probably be something that would be wise to put it up front. There are a number, if you look at this, and now that my pointer's lying, there's a few intersections in here that have some odd configurations that this lot layouts would probably need to change to provide a better roadway intersections within there. There was also some concern that's been raised about whether this road B would end up being a cut through of its own. So the design of that road would probably need to warrant a little more attention to ensure that people don't use that to try to cut the corner around the Collector Road. School bus stops. If anybody was here in the last meeting, the school district commented that they will not stop on private roads, they will only stop from public roads. As this project or this property over the years has had very different iterations, the township has always, I believe, been supportive of taking the Collector Road as a public road. I'm not aware of any decision that's been made on the local roads. I would suggest that some sort of provisions need to be made for where school buses may stop and where parents may wait. I'm sure everybody's familiar with that phenomenon, that all the parents come and the kids wait in their car while they drop them off, and then the parents show up before the school bus comes back. So some consideration for that would probably be warranted if this is to move forward. And again, similar to what I was saying about trail access, and the trail system that is being proposed in here is somewhat incomplete for a development such as this, you'd probably want something a little more integrated and cohesive because you'd like to see this act as a community if it moves forward. More trails, I believe the Township Trail Plan also calls for a perimeter trail around the west half of this property that would go from the Collector Road out to New Street and circle back. So I think that was something that would reasonably be expected as a condition of this plan. Now that I've bored you with all that, we'll talk about the off-site impacts that everybody is interested in. According to the study, there aren't any. The applicant's standard of proof is they are not required to fix what's already rolling. And do you acknowledge that there are some problems out here, primarily 926 and 202, some at 926 and New? And there, the study concludes that the traffic added by this project is not going to have quantifiable impact that warrants them to do anything beyond building the Collector Road. Because they are, their analysis assumes that a lot of traffic is going to divert from the existing travel paths and use this Collector Road. And some of this, we've discussed before, back when Arbor View was built, and that was first planned out in the early or mid 2000s through 2015, when Orbis Way was contemplated, there was some thought that, well, you know, some people that are coming down 202 and are either turning right onto West Pleasant Grove or right onto 926, well, they may turn earlier and they may take this Collector Road. And if we can get this all the way up to the school driveway, people that are coming east on 926, well, maybe they'll take a left at the Collector Road, and they'll work their way up to the school driveway and go around the intersection, 926 and 202. And to some extent, I don't necessarily disagree with that. The challenges with the analysis that was submitted is, one, they did not do, for most of the diversions that they assumed, their own analysis to support the diversions. They went back to the traffic study that was done for Arbor View and said, oh, here are the diversions that they came up with for Arbor View, we're just going to use those because the township already saw those. That was a study that was done, I believe, in 2015, last revised in 2015, based on data from 2012. Generally, you'd expect data a little more current than that. And that's an issue that runs through this entire study, and I think that's one of the reasons we want to make a point that this is a new application and not a modification of the previous application. Because aside from the diversions being based on data from 2012 and 2014, all of the traffic counts that were used from their analysis were done in 2015 and 2016 with one or two minor exceptions. The Institute of Transportation Engineers, their recommended practice is that traffic data should be one year or less. Pendott, in their guidelines, will accept data up to three years if there have been no changes that would substantially affect the traffic flow in this area. Well, a couple of years ago, the township went through a process and they put speed humps on Jackman Drive. If people who are cutting through from 202 to New Street on Jackman Drive decided to change their habits because of the speed humps, we don't have data showing this, but I think it's fair to say some of them probably went to West Pleasant Grove Road. So my opinion is that the data that they're using for the basis of their analysis is outdated. So while I'm going to talk about the results of their analysis, there's a lack of confidence in it. Because the diversions are based on data from 2012, we've got 2015, we've got pre-traffic calming counts for the other study intersections. So one of my recommendations is that consideration should be made to get new traffic counts. That said...
Can I interject there?
Yeah.
Will Pendott demand that as well? I mean, that's obviously a Pendott intersection, and if they have to mitigate the impact, they have to show that the Collector Road does that. So will Pendott require recounting of the diversion?
You know, I would have to review Pendott's comment letter again. I know Pendott had comments about how they came up with the diversions. I don't recall if specifically asked for new counts.
I'll make a suggestion for the audience. Can you define Collector Road? What is a Collector Road?
Absolutely. So what Dick is referring to is what we, traffic engineers and planners, there is a functional hierarchy of roadways. That ideally, you have land uses that take access, they have driveways to local roads. You leave your house, you get on the local road, the local road will take you to a slightly bigger road where you can go a little faster, a Collector Road. Say you leave Dunvegan and you go onto West Pleasant Grove Road, which the township has classified as a Collector Road. You take that to a higher speed, higher volume road, an arterial road might say, oh, I don't know, 202 or 926, and then ultimately, for the bulk of your trip, you would go to a limited access road, depending how far you're going, like the further sections of 202. And then you would get off onto an arterial road, a Collector Road, and finally end up at your destination, which is a local road. So Collector Road is proposed along the eastern edge of this site, something that's been in township planning for a while. And it is intended to serve a higher mobility function than your scattered local road. You know, not as much as an arterial roadway, this is not 202, but more than your general local road.
Second question. You see expression diversion, and I know that they call it, well, there are some who use it a lot. What do you mean? What's the English form of diversion? What's the definition of it, your life? What do you mean by that?
I'm sorry, I have an engineering degree, we didn't study. People are changing their routes. That's what I was trying to explain before. If someone's coming south on 202 and they're going to end up on 926, or right now, they're coming down the hill and they see all the traffic backed up, and they make the hot right on West Pleasant Grove Road, well, maybe instead of going all the way down to New Street, they'll come down, they'll divert down to the Collector Road.
Next question. Calming, I think most of us, most of us have gone through this understanding, but some people don't agree with what I mean. What do you mean by traffic calming?
Traffic calming are mainly physical features. I cannot stress this enough. The stop signs someone put up in your neighborhood, the lowered speed limit sign, those are not traffic calming. Physical features that are put into a road or the road design intended to maintain a consistent speed of traffic within the appropriate context for the adjacent road uses.
What's a physical calming?
Speed humps are one, and Jackman Drive, small roundabouts, road narrowings, there's a number of measures that we can use as traffic engineers.
Great.
Thank you. So for the impacts, again, this is based on the analysis they submitted. The first one is on US 202 South as it approaches West Pleasant Grove Road. There is a need for a right turn lane there to accommodate all of these people that are coming through, so they don't wear out the shoulder like they do now. This is something that was also commented on by Pendott. I would agree with their analysis, and it's probably warranted now, but they do have an impact at that location, and that's something that they should be addressing. 926 and New Street, and this is probably one of the biggest places where I'm saying, I'm speaking strictly from a traffic perspective. I understand that there are potential resources very close to that intersection. But that intersection does not operate well. And the first thing that they did to show in their analysis that it could be better was, they assumed that the traffic timing got adjusted. And that more time, green time is given to New Street, so New Street doesn't back up. We go through a lot of math, and basically, that makes everything better. I would argue, and I've spoken to Pendott about this, Pendott values their numbered routes very highly. 926, they classify as a critical car mark. I think it would be highly unlikely that Pendott would approve a traffic signal timing that takes a significant amount of green time away from 926 into New Street. So I would suggest, as far as this analysis goes, this is not achievable, so it's not what they should be assuming. After that, there is still a need for turn lanes there. Anybody who was here at the last meeting heard that they did look at some initial alignments and how that might impact some of the adjacent properties, but that is clearly something that I think needs to be looked at a little further, what can be done to enhance that intersection. 202 and 926, and this is ones who, again, their conclusion is no impact. Because in addition to people who are heading, you know, from 926 and 202 north, or from 202 South to 926, this study makes an assumption that there are some people that are just going to go south on 202, but they're going to get off at the middle school, they're going to divert, go all the way around, come all the way through, come back out at Bridlewood. So their analysis takes traffic away from the intersection of 202 and 926. So they don't have any impact. And this is, this is kind of where we get to the question about, well, how did you come up with that? And that one's not well-defined in the study. So I would say that that needs a little more clarification on where that assumption came up with. Because frankly, that's fairly significant. You know, people may have heard Pendott has a project to improve that intersection somewhat. The scope of that project is actually, Preski Holmes was going to do is an interim improvement back in 2008. They're supposed to do a southbound right turn lane and another lane going east. That'll help run a better, more efficient signal timing. That Pendott project is slowly, slowly, slowly working through the process. When we were here for the last series of hearings, it was in preliminary engineering. It is still in preliminary engineering. And my understanding is it just got slowed up a little bit again because there are some concerns about how they're balancing the road improvements with the potential to store up resources. So that project is not moving quickly. Other impacts that are not as quantifiable, and you know, this is something brought up by the police chief, we, you know, we know that West Pleasant Grove Road, we've spoken about it, it's a cut through. People tend to go predominantly westbound on West Pleasant Grove Road. It's very likely there could be an increase in traffic. As a, this road, it's as narrow as 17 feet in places. There may be some structural issues that are going to need to be looked at. I know the police express some concerns about turning movements, you know, if you add much more traffic at New and West Pleasant Grove Road, you know, how are those conflicts going to be handled? One thing, you know, that also, I mentioned the site distance. It may not be a bad idea to look at different forms of control for the driveway intersections. Now, the police chief in her review said, maybe you got to think about making those three-way stops. I'm not sure if that would be my preferred choice. I'd actually like to see them look at something a little more substantive, maybe roundabouts, that would, one, provide a better level of access to the site, two, provide some sort of traffic calming on West Pleasant Grove Road, which I think would be greatly appreciated by the residents there. Something that we didn't bring up in our review, but Pendott did, this study actually now, for the first time, looked at the Skiles-Stetson 202 intersection. And in Pendott's review, they raised some questions on whether this project may have an impact up there, that something needs to be done about. And finally, we spoke about this at length in past iterations of the sites being developed, is with the potential impact on some of the adjacent roads, while not in West Town Township, the Bridlewood development has expressed concerns. You know, that Bridlewood is actually a functionally, that's functionally a Collector roadway. And I would suspect that this would actually, from a mobility perspective, benefit some of the people of Bridlewood, but it would not be a bad idea to look to see what sort of traffic calming could be done on Bridlewood to manage the speeds of the neighborhood in a reasonable manner. And previously, there were some concerns that would this development, particularly with the driveway lining up at Dunvegan, would that lead to traffic going through that neighborhood? So those are things that really aren't addressed in this study that would need to be discussed We've mentioned Pendott several times. 926 is a state road, 202 is a state road, West Pleasant Grove Road is township road, New Street is township road. For not just access on the state roads, but there may be drainage and other impacts into the state roads, the applicant is going to be able to get a permit from Pendott, that's called a highway occupancy permit. They made an initial study submission, this traffic study was submitted to Pendott, and that was just, review was released, that's what I was just referring to. Pendott's review, in many ways, is pretty complimentary of the review that the township issued. They have many of the same concerns that have been raised at the township level. And the one other thing I would point out is that the state code addressing highway occupancy permits does not relieve the permitting from securing other local approvals. So I know sometimes you will see, and I think that was kind of what happened when they were looking at the Collector Road intersection at 926, and said, well, you know, it's intersecting the Pendott road, we're going to look at the Pendott standards. Well, the township has standards too, and they have to meet the township standards. Okay, seeing no questions, I'm going to leave.
The next stage is going to be questions from our comments around the planning. So start with the traffic, if you want to ask any questions. You want to go up there? Or take a break?
Now, do any aspects of the traffic studies evaluate the environmental impact associated with additional traffic? I'm talking about auto emissions, dust, particulate matter, additional wear and tear on roads, brake lining emissions, things like that. Does any part of the analysis give you those issues?
Yes, although the results aren't reported. The software that was used for the capacity analysis does evaluate emissions. That was not addressed, reused in developing our conclusions.
So why don't we have access to the data?
The results are there, they just weren't just...
Why wouldn't they be?
Because they're typically not required.
Well, my view is that the statutes, the zoning ordinance in West Town Township as well as the Pennsylvania Constitution require those analyses in order to determine if the protected values are maintained. So it's my view that it has to be done.
I've heard you express that view. I have not seen it be done before, but I prefer to solicitor as if that's something should be dropped off to the attorney.
The last meeting, the toll was here, they seemed to eschew any kind of responsibility in improving the intersections around the periphery of the property. Thinking maybe you could shed some color on whether that's true and if not, what is
The responsibility is typically broken down into two ways. There are onsite improvements and offsite improvements. And onsite typically relate to access improvements and other improvements along the side lines, although I don't know if this is a specific interpretation. Offsite improvements, they may be responsible for, that Pendott's requires. The township is somewhat authoritative. Onsite improvements, Pendott over offsite. If they have a demonstrable impact, it is conceivable that the conditional use process, as well, you have the conditional use process, if they have an impact, one would normally be expected for the type of use, then a condition could be applied, could be imposed upon them to improve the intersections. So in this case, it does appear that there is an impact based on the analysis submitted that would require improvements on 202 South, which is a control, 926 and New, potentially, we don't know, 202 and 926, but that is their responsibility to demonstrate that it's not...
Right, because you can't make them do something on land they don't have. They don't have the power of an domain, and unless the township, working together, will agree to exercise that power, they don't have, they don't have the legal authority to do that.
I have a quick follow-up relative to what you just said, and that is, is there any responsibility that they have in securing any of the land on the periphery of these intersections?
So in my experience, working with Pendott, if Pendott believes an improvement is necessary that requires land from another party, Pendott will hold the applicant to make a good faith effort to obtain the land. And a good faith effort usually means getting an appraisal and offering some sort of money or other compensation to get the land to make that improvement. If an applicant makes a good faith effort and provides documentation to Pendott that says he can't get it, then Pendott may allow them to move forward without making that improvement, but they also have the opportunity, within their guidelines, to require them to do something somewhere else of reasonable comparable value. Because there are certain times when you just can't get the land, or you're in a location where it's just, you know, you're on the edge of a cliff, you can't do something. So they do have the ability then to require the applicant to offer something in lieu of an improvement that they can't make. But that would be subject to Pendott, and they typically do involve the township in those discussions.
I have to... Okay. I think you mentioned there's a, is a three-year impact with Pendott for traffic dating?
Traffic, yes, yes.
So some of the data go back, what, to 2012, right?
Yes.
Is it, could we at this point mandate that they get an updated traffic flow study since this information is dated?
So I'm not sure mandate is the appropriate. It is the applicant's responsibility to demonstrate to the Board of Supervisors by credible evidence. Again, I'm talking too much like an attorney. If the Board of Supervisors does not believe that the data they used is credible to form credible conclusions, I suspect that would influence the Board of Supervisor's decision. My... My, our, the township board, this does not specify how old the data.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Al, is there, are you of the opinion that there is a size or a magnitude of this development that would pose a threat that would not result in significant traffic?
I have not done an independent analysis.
Would you care to hazard a word, partner?
No.
As the, did the, the current study that was done take into consideration since it's outdated, a tremendous growth of southbound traffic on New Street from the university? And I might add that Toll is now, at this point, building another subdivision right now on Thai Road. All of these are all going to amount to a pileup like we have on 926. That study is, oh, I can't believe that they...
So, the counts for New and 926 were from September of 2016. They actually, you know, as Chris pointed out, when you project your future volumes, you do add, I forget the specific percentage, a certain annual percentage growth. However, in this case, I don't believe they did that to come up to existing. I think they evaluated the numbers as if they were 2016 numbers. That's what their existing conditions is.
Oh, well, PennDOT accept that because that's three years old? And you said that...
I don't recall off the top of my head what the PennDOT review said in that, on that respect. I mean, it would have been right within the three years, however, again, in my opinion, because of the change that happened on Jackman Drive, there's been a significant change.
That's all I have. Can I change the tone of the question and ask you a follow-up? You hear a lot of private conversations go on, and in the private conversations that go on, a lot of people from the public, politicians and the like, they say that if there was only one factor in the whole probability toll development that might end up being the cause of probability toll not happening, it would be traffic. What is the likelihood, in your view, of traffic being the killer of probability toll?
That is not something that I can offer in my mind.
Is there anything in the information that you already know that would suggest that some of this information, some of the data is potentially fatal?
There are too many variables, Dick. I mean, the applicant before the hearing process, in the middle of the hearing process, they have the ability to do a new study. They can revise the study, they can collect new counts, they can submit new analysis. Most of what I'm saying could be addressed through the last hearing process, they seem reluctant to make those sort of changes. I don't know of past performance, you know, past behaviors in indication of future performance, I cannot say.
Was there anything in what was presented by their consultant two weeks ago that gave you confidence that Toll has seen the light and will do what the public thinks is necessary just from a common sense point of view, within the law, obviously, to fix the problem?
I'm not sure I can comment on that, Dick.
No, I think, no, clearly they didn't show them a plan, and it's not in the reports. I mean, they presented what they, what they think they need to do, I think. Right? I mean, I think that's what they, they're not offering anything other than what they think their report says, what they believe the law requires.
Well, it's one of the few times I've ever heard a lawyer being less conservative than the consultant, so...
Well, no, and based on my conversations with their counsel, because, if you mind I go into a little bit...
No.
So, the first, and I'm sorry, the first conditional use was denied for various reasons. There are five different reasons why the board felt that the applicant told did not meet the burden of proof under the ordinance. So, under conditional use, there's objective criteria and ordinance that the applicant has to demonstrate compliance with. And the one that you see your very first slide was the one that's relevant to traffic. And the board believed, based on the evidence that Al provided and not finding credible the evidence that their traffic expert provided, that they weren't doing enough to manage the additional traffic that would be generated from their development. And the board believed they didn't meet that particular burden in the ordinance section, and the court affirmed that and said, you're right, board of supervisors, you were correct in denying the plan based on that traffic factor. So, their turnaround in this one was, okay, one of the things was your ordinance did require us to provide a connector road, so hence we have a plan and now provides a connector road. The other thing the ordinance required was, they had suggested that the access from 202 was not necessary, but they never submitted a revised plan that showed that access being taken away. Well, now, lo and behold, they have a plan that doesn't have an access onto Route 202. As far as the intersection improvements that are PennDOT intersections, and I've had a conversation with their counsel about this, because my point is, you know that PennDOT is going to make you do things through those intersections. Either PennDOT is going to do the improvements to 926 and 202, or you're going to be required to, and there's going to be certain improvements you're going to be required to do at 202 and West Pleasant Grove and at New and 926. Why aren't you showing that on your plan that you're submitting to the township and let the township evaluate that and then approve that plan, assuming they meet all the other conditions, which again, I'm not suggesting they would do that, but assuming the plan was ready to be approved because they met all the other elements of the ordinance, then the board would say, okay, this is the plan and use the traffic improvements you need to. And Toll's counsel said he would never submit to the township a plan that has improvements that PennDOT will mandate, that that's something between them and PennDOT. And he doesn't want the township necessarily to be imposing as conditions things that PennDOT is going to require. So, that's their legal position. They're going to go through the process with PennDOT, and they've already started it, and the township has a copy of the review letter that PennDOT issued, and they're going to work through that process, they believe, independently of this conditional use process. And that's what got them hung up last time, I believe.